For those that don't know me, my name's Andrew King. I'm the Chair of Stormwater South Australia. Welcome to our event today. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge that we actually have people from around the country joining us today. But most of us in South Australia are based on Ghana land. I'd like to acknowledge the Ghana leaders, present, past and emerging, and their connection to land and water. And also welcome to other tribes from around the country where other participants are joining us from today, including our speakers, Daniel Ryder and Mia, who are from Blacktown City Council in New South Wales.
Thank you, Andrew, for that introduction. I'm the Wussin Compliance Officer at Blacktown City Council. And with me, I have Mia, who is my Support Officer. And we're the Wussin Compliance Team looking at private Wussin in Blacktown. I've been involved in this program for a couple of years now while Mia has joined this year. Today, we're just going to be talking a bit about the program, giving a bit of context to what we mean by private Wussin, how we've got to where we are and what we're doing at the moment with this program. So now I'll hand this over to Mia.
So what do you mean by private Wussin? Usually, most people ask what Wussin is. We can roughly say it is related to an integrated system dealing with stormwater, such as onsite stormwater detention, rainwater tank and most assets associated with stormwater. They are going to help to improve water security, livability, flood mitigation and waterway protection. And the private Wussin as a Wussin asset owned by private property owners. For this reason, the property owners will be responsible to maintain and manage them properly so that they can work in a safe and efficient manner. And we can quickly go through the Wussin asset types. This slide shows a range of Wussin asset types that we are interested in. We have water quality assets like food cartridges and pee inserts. We have water conservation assets like rainwater tanks. And we also have flood mitigation assets like onsite stormwater detention systems. So why do we care about the private Wussin at all? Firstly, assets like OSD are helpful ways to localise the flood mitigation. These assets are temporarily detaining stormwater to reduce flooding. And obviously, water security, because we know we are going through climate change and this will impact water availability. And there is also urban expansion which is increasing the amount of portable water. So assets like rainwater tanks can help reduce the amount of portable water and help improve the water security. And assets like water quality, like gross pollution traps can help remove the pollutants from stormwater and our waterways. So this means the maintenance on these systems plays an important part in protection of waterways. And one of the important parts I'd like to get across here is that over a majority of Wussin assets are typically private owned. So if we're not enforcing this maintenance compliance on this, it would be a big issue. And there is also mounting evidence that there are low rates of maintenance on these systems. So it is important for a program to be in place to make sure that they are all being maintained properly.
So this program's evolved quite a bit since its implementation in 2012, where it started off as an inspection-based program where it was the Wussin Compliance Team that was going out onsite and doing inspections and was being managed by an Excel spreadsheet. However, in 2018, 2019, the program was reviewed to see how it was going. And it was found that the legal enforceability was severely limited, so that was the conditions and the covenants and that sort of thing. And also the fact that it being an inspection-based program was impractical due to the large number of assets and properties within this program. We've estimated to be over 10,000 assets within Blacktown. So we're needing to think about how to better enforce maintenance compliance on these private properties. And so at the end of 2019, around the time I joined Blacktown City Council, we started working on a new version of this program that saw significant changes. Firstly, the legal foundation was thoroughly reworked. So this was the conditions of consent for development. So went through the suite of conditions that Blacktown Council were using and condensed them and created some nuance. But it's also talking about the positive covenant and restriction on the use of land that we impose, or have registered against the titles of these properties. I'll be talking about all this a bit later in the presentation. We also developed a Wussin Compliance Management System, which was important because due to that large number of assets and properties within this program, we needed some way to track the compliance at the property, but also the asset levels. We've developed that and we're in the process of trialling that at the moment. We've also shifted from that inspection-based model to an owner reporting model. This doesn't mean that we won't be doing inspections as that's still going to be a critical part of our program. However, we're reducing the amount of time we're in the field so that we can increase our capacity to enforce compliance on a larger scale. And so that by doing that, we are using a owner reporting model where it is up to the owners and the contractors to be reporting to us on maintenance. And then through inspections, visiting the properties and inspections, we can kind of see whether what the contractors are saying matches with what we're saying. A lot of people see us as a leader in this space and we have taken some big steps in terms of maintenance compliance. However, we're still fairly early on in our journey despite it being 10 years since this program officially was implemented. And so at the moment, we're trialling this program. Over the next coming years, it's probably going to be more significant evolution. And this program is always going to be an evolving program because there's always going to be more information, more data coming through and different types of assets and everything that are going to pose a range of different challenges. At the base of this program, we have compliance. You can't have a compliance program without that. And so when I'm talking about compliance, I'm talking about having a systematic way to monitor private Wussin systems with legal authority to act on it. About having conditions of consent that require developers to do certain things before the operational stage, the positive covenants and the legal documents that give us the ability to enforce compliance and to enter properties and all of that. But also having a system that allows us to enforce compliance and to track and manage that. Now, it's great to be able to enforce compliance, but to ensure that compliance is occurring, we do need to be educating and engaging with the property owners and their maintenance contractors. So we've developed a range of materials and opportunities and situations where we can engage with them, explaining the matter and how they need to be managed. So those are the two components we've worked on so far. However, one component that we would like to work towards and we have had some initial discussions about is recognition and incentivisation. Because it's great having the ability to enforce compliance. It's great having people understand that they need to comply. But recognising and encouraging people to do the right thing is just another way that we see that this compliance program can help be more effective. At the start of everything, we have the Blacktown Development Control Plan. And within that Part J, which is looking at Wussin and Integrated Water Cycle Management, this is the most important part of that DCP for us. Important because it identifies what types of development requires Wussin systems. So the people in the development stage will understand which developments require our conditions of consent and have them opposed upon them. It also requires the developers to provide a range of strategies, assessments and plans to be submitted to council and some of those would have to come to us. Just because for our program to work, we need a range of information and data so that we know what we're enforcing compliance on and what we kind of need to be doing and making sure that people are doing the right thing. And finally, this DCP also defines targets such as around water quality, conservation and retention, which are all important parts of Wussin. And so this DCP is given legal effect in New South Wales through the APNA Act 1979. There's going to be a bit of variance between what we have in New South Wales and South Australia, but hopefully giving a bit of a starting point for other states to think about. Once we've identified what properties and developments require Wussin, it's about the conditions. And for this, we've developed a suite of conditions relevant to the Wussin Compliance Program and which require the developers to provide certain information or do certain things before they receive their subdivision or occupation certificate. Firstly, there is one that requires applicants to provide personal Wussin asset info to council. The condition is on the screen right there. Basically, it's asking for the developer to provide information such as locations, the types, the models and model numbers of assets. And we need that to understand what we're trying to enforce compliance on because it's great knowing this Wussin on the property, but without knowing where it is or what it is, it's very hard for us to enforce compliance. The way that they can provide this information is through a stormwater management report or through a certified and signed stormwater works executive plan that's showing what's on the property and where it is. Next, another important condition is one that requires applicants to submit a maintenance schedule. We've developed a maintenance schedule template, which Mia will talk about a bit later. The developers are required to fill in this schedule and provide to us for review. That's collecting all of that information from that first condition about the important information about the assets. So identifies what activities, what assets and where they are on the property. Next, we have one that requires applicants to enter into a maintenance contract or maintenance agreement. There's two similar ones like this. There's one that I've heard talked about when people are referring to Blacktown, which is about a prepaid maintenance contract. And so for that, it's normally a five-year prepaid maintenance contract that we require developers to enter into. And the point of that is to make sure that for the first three to five years, maintenance is actually happening on the property. While there's the whole change of ownership and new owners coming in, it just makes it a bit smoother and easier for those property owners. We then have the maintenance agreement condition, which is about the life of the development. During the operational stage of the development, we will reach out and be like, your contract's about to end, you do need to enter a maintenance agreement. So for the life of the development, just making sure that the assets are being maintained properly. Probably the most important condition for us is the one that requires applicants to apply necessary positive and restrictive covenants on their property. That's important because these are the documents we use to enforce compliance. This condition's requiring them to provide it to council for review and endorsement and then have this registered with the New South Wales Land Registry Services. And these conditions are given legal effect through the APNA Act 1979. With the positive covenants and the restrictions on the use of land, it's about making the ability to enforce compliance last forever. Council, with the help of lawyers, have written up standard recitals for these documents, which are available on our website. These covenants, once registered against the title of the property, is given legal effect under the Conveyancing Act 1919. And then it's managed by the New South Wales Land Registry Service. As on the previous slide, the condition requires them to register these covenants against the title of the property. So they provide that to New South Wales Land Registry Service and have that managed and looked after by them. And it's applied to the property, not the individuals per se, because as property's ownership changes over time, it makes more sense to have it against the property rather than with individuals. The final important point is that it can only be extinguished by the consent authority, which in our case is Blacktown Council. The point of that is to make sure that our ability to enforce compliance lasts forever. And so that means that the property owner can't modify or alter or remove this covenants without our approval. On the screen right now is a screenshot of the positive covenant. It's quite a long image, so it's a bit blurred, but you can see this on our website. This covenant defines what a Wussin system is to make it easier for us to enforce compliance. And if we were to take legal action against them, having a legal definition of what a Wussin system is is important. That's provided at the bottom of that document, which outlines it's really anything to do with Wussin. And so whether that's the OSD, the gross pollution trap, or even sometimes the curves or pipes that are leading to the Wussin assets. Next, it defines the owner responsibilities to their Wussin system. So the positive covenant outlines what they have to do in regards to their Wussin system, which includes regularly keeping it clean. And so basically maintaining it, fixing things and acting on written notices from council. It requires owners to act on any written instruction from council. And then also authorises council to inspect. So there's a section called Inspection and that gives us the authority to enter a property to inspect the Wussin system. We are supposed to be giving them notices before entering the property. However, in an emergency, so there's a flooding issue or some other hazard to the community or the property itself, we have the right to enter the property to inspect and figure out what the issue is so that we can help them solve it. And also authorises council to compel work. So we can give them written instruction on things to do, whether that's replacing a pit insert or needing to maintain the asset, we can compel them to do this work. And if they chose not to do that work, we can then carry out the work ourselves for them and then cover those costs through legal means. And finally, kind of going back to the slide before, which is about making it forever, it makes the covenant bind to the property perpetuity, so it lasts forever. This is given legal effect through the Conveyancing Act 1919, Division 4. The restriction on the use of land is different to the positive covenant in the sense that it says what they can't do to the Wussin system. It gives a definition to what a Wussin system is. Again, it gives that same definition to the positive covenant, but it prevents owners from doing anything that will reduce the performance of the Wussin system. So in that second section of the outline, it's that they can't do any act, matter or thing, which would prevent the system from functioning properly in a safe and efficient manner, or do anything that would encroach upon the asset or do anything that kind of alters or modifies the asset. And finally, kind of similar to the positive covenant, it's making the covenant bind to the property perpetuity so that we always have that ability to enforce compliance. Again, given legal effect under the Conveyancing Act.
So reporting is mandatory for our owner reporting model, reporting needs to be mandatory. We have developed a few things to help with that. We have our reporting sheets that are available in our Wussin Inspection and Maintenance Guidelines on our website. And what that provides are inspection and maintenance sheets to be filled out for asset or Wussin asset types that you have. And it's been created for each asset type. On the screen, you can see an inspection sheet for a rainwater tank, which breaks down the rainwater tank into its functional component. Give you space to have a space to give a condition score for that component and leave some notes for that component. Then we've also created a maintenance schedule template, which is available on our website. So the aim of this template is to create consistency across properties and the systems to make sure that they are all being maintained the same. It allows the property owners, the maintenance contractors and the council staff to understand what maintenance is required and when it is required. And it has to be filled out as part of the development consent process, as Dana talked about earlier. Because this is given legal effect through Conveyancing Act 1919, Division 4, via our positive covenant. To help property owners and maintenance contractors, we have built a few things, engage with the community. For this, we have built relevant webpages on council's website that provides a location for the community to access our Wussin compliance material. And we have built a range of letters to provide to property owners that throughout the different stages of Wussin compliance program. These letters just to provide basic information for owners to know about the situation and what is required from them. And we also have developed a range of fact sheets to help community to understand what Wussin assets are, what requirements property owners have and how to safely maintain the Wussin assets. We also developed our Wussin Inspection and Maintenance Guidelines, which is available on our website. This guideline helps the property owners and the maintenance contractors to understand how to safely maintain and inspect different asset types. And we also have the report templates in this guideline for the maintenance contractors to fill in when completing the works. We also have a range of ways we communicate with property owners and maintenance contractors. We will talk via phone calls, emails or in person if needed.
On the screen right now is a simplified diagram of how this compliance program operates. Where on the left side, we have the green, the good side, which is compliant, and then the red side, the non-compliant, the bad side. And so every property in this program would start on the very left in the green and move towards non-compliance depending on their actions. Initially, we update our Wussin Compliance Management System, so collecting all of that information and documentation that we need to know what assets are on the property and what we need to do in terms of enforcing compliance on this property. Once we've entered that into the system, we will then generate a welcome letter and a bit of a welcome package to introduce and welcome them to the program. This includes a letter outlining what's required from them, the three fact sheets that Mia talked about, and then also a maintenance schedule, which Mia talked about, outlining what assets are on the property, when things need to be maintained and how to maintain them. Eventually, we get to inspection reports due, so when the reports are due for their inspections. And this is where things can start to type. If the reports were not received, we will send them a letter advising them that they have a couple more weeks to provide us reports showing that they've inspected the system. Otherwise, they will be considered a non-compliant property. And so we would eventually get to that border. However, if the reports have been provided, we will assess the reports and determine if corrective actions are required. If corrective actions are not required, they will then loop back to inspection reports due and hopefully stay in that loop and providing those inspection reports at the frequency outlined in their maintenance schedule. However, if that was the case and everyone was doing the right thing, this wouldn't be an issue for the industry. If corrective actions were required, we would send them a letter advising them they have a couple more weeks before they're considered a non-compliant property to provide those reports. And so we're now at the border of compliant and non-compliant and we assess the reports. If the reports have been provided and no corrective actions are required anymore, they look back to inspection reports due and remain a compliant property. However, if corrective actions are required or reports are not provided, we will send them a new letter advising them that they are now a non-compliant property and have a couple more weeks to fix things. Otherwise, we will be coming to do a compliance inspection on their property. So we get to the non-compliant corrective action reports due stage. And at this point, we again assess the report situation. If reports have been provided and everything's all good, they'll look back to inspection reports due and everything's fine. If reports are not provided or corrective actions are still required, we will send a letter advising that we're coming to do an inspection on a certain date. We will carry out that inspection and identify all of the issues and situation for that property during that visit. And after that inspection, we send them a letter outlining that they have a couple more weeks to fix things. We outline all of the issues with that property. But we also attach a invoice to that letter, which is charging for our time to do that inspection. We eventually get to the point of cost recovery when reports are due. If issues are resolved, so payments being provided and no corrective actions are required, they will then look back to inspection reports due, become a compliant property and everything's all good. However, if the reports were not provided, if corrective actions are still required or money was not provided, this is where we will then work with our legal team at council and discuss the situation. This is what's been happening over the past couple of months and work with them to figure out what we want to do next, which could include the corporate lawyers at council, sending a legal letter advising them that they need to rectify the issues immediately or council will consider taking legal action on the property. Mia talked before about engaging with the community, but we're also interested about engaging with the industry, which is why we're here at today's webinar. We recognise that we're leaders and we've done a lot of work in this space and it would be a waste for other councils to use their resources to do what we've already done. One thing that we're working on is documenting the program through a manual and a process map. The idea of this is to outline step by step exactly how Blacktown City Council's Wussin Compliance Program operates and works so that other councils can look at it and see what they can copy. Every council is going to be different, every state's going to be different, but there would be similarities other councils could learn from that. So that's something that we are wanting to work on. Hopefully, sometime after trial of our program, this could be something we can develop and provide to the industry. Sharing resources is also another important thing for us. And one of the things is the Wussin Inspection and Maintenance Guidelines that we've developed. We have a Creative Commons version that other councils can use if they want to, can modify it as long as they can meet the requirements. And that's a non-commercial reason. Rather than the council developing a whole new guideline, they can take ours and modify it to their needs. But I've been attending some meetings recently with the Parramatta River Catchment Group in Sydney, working with them to help them improve and figure out how to do main Wussin maintenance compliance, but also just working with the Stormwater Industry Association, doing this event with Stormwater South Australia, also Stormwater New South Wales and Stormwater Queensland. The idea of engaging with the industry in this way is to change the industry through the spread of ideas and action as we've got a lot of ideas, we've got resources and we've got things happening. We want to be engaging and sharing because we hope that this innovative way to Wussin compliance can be a good contagion where it's kind of spreading and sharing the ideas and resources that we've come up with so that other councils can do this. If you have questions after today, you can reach out to our team via our email address, You can also reach out to us on LinkedIn. I am giving weekly posts on Wussin, sometimes about the program, but sometimes just about Wussin in general as a way to get a conversation happening. And I'd like to finish with a thanks to Ben Penelurk and Andrew Thomas, who are two of the previous Wussin Compliance Officers for their significant contributions to this program and all those who have come before us at Blacktown because this program has been in place for 10 years. So there's been a lot of people that have helped shape and lead us to the point that we are at right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel, and thanks Mia. I'm going to take priority and jump the queue, ask a first question. Where does Blacktown sit in the big picture of the stormwater conversation? Is Blacktown like in any other council from a stormwater perspective? Or was there some unique drivers in Blacktown that made you the leaders of this?
I wasn't here when this program started in 2012. But from my understanding of the situation, I think we realised that we were imposing all of these assets on private properties and we have them on public property as well. And there was just so many issues. And I think it was kind of unfair to be putting these assets on property owners and then enforcing compliance on things that people didn't really know and it wasn't working effectively. So we needed to come up with a way to manage and help those property owners with their legal responsibilities. And so we've kind of, I think, took that on board to lead this. But I think what really helped Blacktown become a leader is through the fact that we've had a lot of well-experienced people in the industry helping out with this, whether that's people that have worked directly on this program, such as Ben Penelurk and Andrew Thomas, or people like Tony Merrily and Mark Ledman and those sorts of people who have helped provide the expertise and knowledge we needed to push Blacktown towards a Wussin leadership type position.
I take from that that Blacktown was in the same moral dilemma that pretty much every other council finds themselves in. And you were just the first council that basically said, let's do something about this somewhat idiotic cyclical system.
I just might add to that. I think also the fact that we're quite a large council, which meant we have a lot more funding to establish ourselves to do this sort of program, while smaller councils and other councils might not have the same resourcing and funding to spend the amount of time that we'd spent on developing this and fixing these issues. So I think that's also probably a bit of a factor to what's helped us a bit.
And did I also hear you're one of the biggest growth councils?
Yeah, well, I think in maybe New South Wales or something like that. I can't remember the stat, but something like that.
The cost of the program, including wages. Are you at a point in the development where you're starting to get a handle of what the cost of running a program like this is?
I've only been involved in this program where we've been developing the program and the process of trialling it. So I haven't really had that chance where we're spending a lot of time enforcing compliance. We have two pit pool working full-time on this program. There's the Compliance Officer, which is me, and then the Support Officer, which is Mia, working on this. We don't really have anyone else in council working on this space. So two full-time staff and then a bit of extra money on top of that to work on guidelines and other resources and that sort of thing. I don't think if other councils were to copy our model of compliance, it would cost as much as ours, I'm hoping. Because by the fact that we've tested a lot of things, we've developed resources, we've done all the hard work, I would hope that would make it a bit easier to manage and implement such a program elsewhere.
Some of that running cost is still developing the program? And you're also not implementing on all facets of private property?
I'll go into a bit of the trial just to help people understand that. At the moment, we're trialling this program on industrial properties with the hope to expand from that. But with industrial being the properties with the most amount of assets and more likely to be polluters, we are wanting to work with them and help that. And then if we see that it works on industrial, we can then expand to all industrial and then eventually maybe to commercial and then eventually to residential if that's possible. So it depends on that resourcing again. Our council has a lot of assets, a lot of properties, so maybe we'll never get to that residential level. But other councils have maybe less properties, less assets to deal with. So they could do all the range or they can just choose, maybe they just want it to be a residential program or industrial or whatever they want.
How does maintenance standards discussed in your compliance packages align with council's maintenance of its own assets and things that it was responsible for? Would you pass your own litmus test?
At the moment, while we're working on this program, figuring out how to make this work for private, I don't think we've probably worked as closely as we want to check those standards between public and private. That is something that we would want to do because it's unfair where enforcing compliance to a higher standard to private, if it's not the same with public. That is something that we would want to do because it's unfair where enforcing compliance to a higher standard to private if it's not the same with public. So that is something that Black Town recognizes and something we will be working towards to try to create that equality. But at the moment, I'm mainly focused on private. I can't really comment too much on what the public frequencies are.
So you come in and in your presentation about education being one of those cogs in the process. Is there a facet of education that's undertaken that's separate from the compliance?
Council does have a dedicated stormwater education officer. And so he I think their role's a bit more helping the community understand that sort of thing. But in relation to the program, we are trying to be a bit more friendly about this because it is new. No one's done this work before. So rather than coming straight in with that stick, we do want to give that carrot to kind of help them along. And that model that I went through is a simplified version of it, but we do have the opportunity to be lenient and flexible in how we do that. We do see people are really trying. We can be a bit more lenient with them. While if there are people that are just doing their own thing and we can tell us on purpose or whatever, we can then be more and more strict. So we have that flexibility to kind of go between that range.
And I guess if you've got the fact sheets and the guidance manuals openly available, then that's a form of education that's available for people anyway. Is there any specific on-ground real-world testing of water quality from any of these places anywhere through the regime?
Is that about private?
Coming out of the private, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be something that I would be keen to get in terms of data. It's not something that we've really had the ability to get that data yet. There might have been stuff done before I got involved at Black Town, but since I've got that, we haven't really been doing stuff to or I haven't been involved in anything testing the quality of water and these assets.
That's something you're interested in in seeing where that stands.
I would be getting as much data as we can to have that. And store order across.
So I guess you're working on the principle at the moment that if something was designed correctly, installed correctly and being looked after correctly, there's there's fair opportunity that what's happening at the bottom end is giving you the results you're after.
There's chances at the moment that things haven't been done right, but at the moment, we're developing that model to kind of make sure that we can enforce compliance. And then later on, we can refine things and work on things to ensure that the quality of the assets are what they say.
There was a question about whether the program is predominantly bringing in customers via the new development process. My take from that was that given those mechanisms you use through planning and through other processes, that this is probably exclusively being targeted at new developments as they come online.
So, yeah, like councils do have the opportunity to make it just going online or historical. Our program does include historical development, so ones from ten to twenty years ago. And the trial does, I think, maybe fifteen years ago type of age. It's up to councils whether they really want to go historical. It is a bit of a challenge to get that information and documentation, but it is possible and that's what we're working on.
What are the key obstacles that you're aware of that have come to mind in implementing the program?
I guess the reality is this program has been in place in ten years and one of the issues is people don't fully understand Wussin. Before I joined this program three years ago, I'd never heard the word Wussin, but I haven't heard stormwater. So joining this was a learning lesson for me. And if I've never heard of my environmental background, I can't really expect other people to understand it. That's why we've really made your education engagement a core component of this program because we recognize not everyone knows it. Knows what Wussin is, why it's used, how it's used and how to look after it. I think education has been a key issue internally within council, but also externally engaging with people because people don't understand that. They have the assets or understand what they need to do. To set up such a program, you do have to work with quite a lot of people. Because there's a lot of teams. Black Town is a large council with a lot of employees, so trying to work with the different teams. But also externally with maintenance contractors to try and figure out how we can align to make things a bit easier in terms of maintenance in our council.
A lot of councils in subdivisional work where new subdivisions are being created because of the concern about the integrity of anything onsite and the reliability of anything onsite, there's a reluctant ultimate request to have Wussin measures in the public. How does that discussion sit for Black Town with regards to the onsite versus public asset when it comes to addressing Wussin in subdivisions in your council area?
I do understand the kind of issue of onsite and on like public grounds and that sort of thing. For me personally, I think it just depends per council really, because different councils will have different funding, different situations, different amount of space and everything. It would be easy to maintain council land, but then sometimes it is easier in private. It's kind of hard to give a definitive answer to that for the whole industry. In terms of Black Town, we've established a whole system and program about implementing it on private, but also on public. So we are, I think, going down the route of having it both. However, I do recognize that that there are issues either way, whichever side you choose. And I do think whether that is public or private, it's always going to have issues. I think coming up with those solutions to manage it properly on private and public is an important thing to be doing.
I might throw to a different person to answer this. There's a question came up about whether the the capacity building program in South Australia Water Systems of S I could consider funding a a compliance officer for a pilot scheme in South Australia. And I think Mel wants to have a bite at that one, being the program manager of the capacity building program.
I think it's absolutely doable. We've got a graduate that's about to start with us or actually a master's student who's who's actually going to be doing exactly that. It's quite possible that could grow beyond a pilot and actually the maintenance manuals that have been based on the Black Town work. And that will be available towards the end of the year. We're just having some artwork done up for the drawings, but the actual text has already been completed and currently been tested by City of Marion.
In general, the proportion of onsite detention assets compared to water quality assets that you've got that have been that have been caught up in the system to date.
Based off the trial property, I think most of it is water quality. I would say I'm just going to have a guess and say sixty something percent is probably water quality. And there is the rainwater tanks and then there's detention. A lot of properties do have the detention assets. I think the particular areas are going to have more detention than others, depending on their flooding and closeness to waterways and that sort of thing. Predominantly, this program is looking at water quality, but water conservation and detention is also a component.
And from the water quality perspective, you you're rough balance between proprietary versus green infrastructure style water quality.
I haven't done that analysis yet.
Where I was going to come to self self-assessment, I guess proprietary, I would imagine would be relatively simple. Self-assessment against green infrastructure could be more complicated. How do you go with this that self-assessment, property owner assessment against the green rain gardens and biofiltration systems?
What do you mean by self-assessment? Are you talking about inspections and that sort of stuff? Yeah, so we've come up with a standardized report that we hope is easy enough for maintenance contractors to be using. I think it depends on the maintenance contract. Some people have a lot more experience with these assets and they might specialize in their particular ones. So it really depends on the contractor that ends up maintaining that property. One thing that we'll probably be working towards is qualification for contractors. We have that better education. And maybe that is just using the Stormwater New South Wales guidelines for stormwater treatment measures. So the maintenance of that, because that's the training at the moment that's available and that's something that we're considering.
Your linkage to several acts and legislations, you mentioned the E P I Act, the Convailing Act, your planning system. Enabled positive covenants and restrictions and encumbrances and then conditions. Are you aware as to whether any of those legislations or acts required edit or modification to enable your program to be able to leverage off them? Or were the hooks already there just to connect on to?
For this new revision of this program, I can't really talk about what it was ten years ago, but for the past couple of years, everything was in place for us. Now, I'm not sure if that was made ready ten years ago or if that's just been more of a recent thing. Like the D C P, the Part J, that's looking at Wussin and that's an integrated water management or whatever it's called. Is from twenty fifteen, I believe. So that is a bit more new. There was a different part before it. But I do think that since its implementation, there has been a bit of work put in place to make it work a bit better for our program. But in the past couple of years, we had everything in place. It was just modifying the covenants to make it a bit stronger and tested legally with lawyers.
Is there much backlash between getting property owners to enter into that separate binding condition to what a lot of people would consider just stormwater management?
Mostly it's just people weren't aware that they had assets or that they had to do things in a particular way. I do think the program should have been educating a bit more, but it's hard because council have never kept track of where the private assets were. So that's what we're trying to do at the moment to identify all the properties and work with them to help them understand that. So it's more people weren't aware what they had to do. So hasn't been really backlash on it. At the moment, it's a small trial of the programs. We haven't had to deal with a lot of people bringing them in with this program.
But you've had reasonably good compliance as such, enough people coming on board on the program?
We haven't had enough time to assess their compliance with reporting and inspection because this program was only launched in June, the new version of the trial. So it's still a very fresh early thing. Maybe towards the end of next year, we'll be able to provide a bit more data and info on that.
I'm interested in what sort of proportion you have of non-compliance and you know, how far down the chain does it go to get to legal action? Have you ever gone that far?
We've only had one reporting round. So we haven't actually got a lot of data saying how much is compliant and not compliant, but I can't really comment on that yet. We haven't got to the legal action side of things yet because it's only just happened. The reporting rounds are every quarter, depending on the asset. Sometimes it's six monthly. At the moment, we don't really have that data. Again, that's going to be something we'll need to kind of wait towards maybe mid to late next year to kind of get that.
Do you request a land developer in a land division to install Wussin on private land, similar to the one previously as to where, you know, with applications as they come through the system now? Is there a specific lane with regards to that?
We only really get involved just before operational stuff happens. In the D C P, the Part J, which is looking at Wussin and that sort of thing, that is identifying what properties require Wussin and then I would assume case by case, depending on what that develops.
I guess what that answers is that your program is not directly driving anything at planning stage. Not influencing a a you know, a strategic direction one way or the other from that perspective.
We only get involved after construction's finished.
As I close things out, if there was only two things you wanted them to take away from today, Daniel, what would those two things be?
I would say that Wussin maintenance compliance is possible. Has been an issue for a while and no one's really taken up that work to figure it out, but we are in the process of figuring that out at the moment. Hopefully in the near future, we'll have a compliance program model that other councils can copy and implement themselves. I would also just say that people should start thinking about implementing this trial. As I said, we'll be going towards the end of next year where we'll have the data and figure out the model of that works. However, there are things that people can start doing, conversations they can start having within the organization, figuring out if there's interest to do such a thing. Is there anything similar within the organization? Start thinking about it, start having conversations and you can start working on it before our trial's done.